You ready? At six thirty, I'm gonna call the Tuesday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Pembroke Public School meeting to order. I did not have anyone sign in for public comment, Rich. I didn't know that you just came in. No, that's okay. No, it's fine. I know you are.
Excellent. Any other questions? Because I want to watch.
Okay.
And I was wondering after this if we could at another sooner date maybe have a little question and answering session because there's gonna be a lot of information tonight and some questions.
On VOTAC?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the plan. The plan is after we presented tonight to kind of be a road show and go all different places and present the information to as many people that are want to hear it and want to come out. And so between the community center, council on aging, we'll hold a couple of ones at schools for people to come to too.
Yep, I'm working with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we're getting some up there.
Any dates of yet?
We should have some very soon. Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna talk with the chamber this week. So hopefully we'll pin down a couple of proposed dates.
And where should we look for that on the?
We'll push it elsewhere. Our broadcast email system.
And the chamber's gonna do that as well.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much.
That's true. Well, Rich didn't sign in and I gave him the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to see, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? I just want to make sure everybody else had the same opportunity. Okay, thank you. Would you all join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good to see some people here in the audience. Really appreciate it. Do you have any adjustments to the agenda? We may move a couple of the presentations around. One, our state rep, Ken Sweezy called. He does want to make sure that he's here for the vocational portion of the presentation. I told him if we needed to move things around a little bit, we'd be happy to do it. He's leaving one meeting in Halifax trying to get here. So out of respect for him, we may move that to second, just to be sure. Under communications, there was a communication that I did see over the weekend regarding school finances and enrollment. And I think it's, it's a good question actually, and I think it's, it's always good to have that refresher sort of out there. Student enrollment across the Commonwealth has been declining, right? Population in the Commonwealth is declining. Last year, we were fortunate and this year we're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna, members of the board of selectmen, members of advisory, and the committee in a joint meeting together. But as we go through the budget, I think it's a good reminder to sort of explain how we are handling finances in relation to declining student enrollment. One of the things that we benchmark and we put out last year was about eight years' worth of data that actually showed class sizes and teacher numbers by class. The main relation and in the way that you, you usually know that a school committee in a district is responding to enrollment either spikes or reductions is in that pupil, per pupil data, per classroom, right? So we've been somewhere in the seventeen at the low to about twenty-two, twenty-three at the high. That has been consistent over that timeframe. It's actually crept up in the last couple of years, which actually means that the enrollment-driven reductions that we've taken over the past couple of years are actually even a little more than you maybe were needed to because of specific enrollment-driven reductions. We're actually planning on taking a couple of enrollment-driven reductions next year. If that number, if, for example, the student number as opposed to being seventeen to twenty-two went fifteen to nineteen, what it would mean is we're not doing a good job adjusting our resources and our teaching resources to the number of students. Conversely, if it skyrocketed, it would mean that we were taking cuts too dramatically. There is a, there was a citizens petition that was put forward on the warrant this year that actually was asking for a one point one million dollar operational override. I actually responded behind this desk when that happened and said respectfully, we don't need that this year, right? We don't need that this year. And putting an additional burden on the taxpayer just did not seem to be logical. I don't know if it's being withdrawn. I don't exactly know what's happening, but I'll reiterate, we are going to be able to balance our budget just fine without an operational override this year. We are going to talk about VOTAC later in today, and part of that's gonna be the economics. There will be a two and a half million dollar, maybe three million dollar piece of an operational override that will be required to cover tuitions. That's maximum number of students times the amount. That's ultimately what will be there. That is not a standard operational override to support the day-to-day with the school district. However, the town manager has said in now multiple presentations that he has made that we are fighting an uphill battle in this town in a couple of areas, and he's right. We have a very large pension liability that there are catch-up payments that are being made to Plymouth County and will be. I believe it's through twenty thirty-one. And at the same time, our new growth rates, meaning the new bill that's happening in town that adds to our tax base, which would add additional tax revenue, has been very low over the past couple of years and is projected to be in the next couple of years. In a high interest rate environment, that is not unusual. The town manager has actually said we may be looking at a town-wide operational override at some point, at which point the schools would likely participate. That is not because we are not reacting appropriately to enrollment-driven concerns. I'd be happy to add it to a future agenda item. I actually was gonna do a presentation if it came up tonight to actually show how we have responded in kind and in good measure. Just to give a little, I think, comfort to the people in the residents of town, between myself, Erin Ove, and David Boyle, we have collectively about a hundred years of business finance experience. And Erin and I combined have about, it's gotta be close to forty years of school finance experience. So it's a good thing to bring up. It's a good thing to talk about. It's a good thing to remind ourselves of. Declining enrollments are a challenge in every district across the Commonwealth. It is something that almost every district is actually facing. That student number, and look for that. So when we put budgets together and we present budget data and information, ask what the, you know, students per class are. And if you don't, if you see that staying steady, we're reacting appropriately. If you see it creeping up, we may have taken reductions for good reason, because we know enrollments are there. And in year one, you may see that happen. But look at that. It's a good measure. So I just wanted to make sure we were all very clear about that. Bills are circulating. We do have meeting minutes on March eighteenth. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the school committee meeting minutes on March eighteenth as presented.
Come on, second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All there's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. It's unanimous, Natalie. And I will go to the superintendent's report.
No. So the first thing in my report is, as requested, a first read of the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. So that is in your packet as a first read. Obviously, we're open to any feedback and suggestions. It looks traditionally like what it has looked like for a really long time here with staff joining us the Monday before Labor Day with the Monday, Tuesday professional development days, school on Wednesday and Thursday, and then no school the Friday of Labor Day weekend.
Or good Friday.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Our tentative last day of school with no weather days, and I purposely said weather as opposed to snow because we haven't had snow days in a really long time, but we have had weather days, would be Thursday, June eleventh. So we will plug in some of the open house days before I bring this back to you for your second read. But other than that, this is pretty much the shell of the calendar.
I know I don't like having like Christmas Eve, Eve, being a half day. That's, I think, a hard day, but.
You're talking about December twenty-third?
Yeah, Christmas.
You'd like it to be what, a full day of school for children?
Yeah, no.
Oh.
Oh, cringe.
No, 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 no school. Not a half.
So then, I mean.
No, I know. It's, it's.
It's weird because it's a Tuesday, right? So you wouldn't necessarily bring kids back in.
Yeah, just like having to go back for one day on a Friday.
Right.
And remember, right?
And it is a half day, so that's not bad.
Let's normally have all of our, like, the assemblies and you get to sing the Christmas carols and all that. We don't do that.
It's just, I remember.
Ryan likes the half day. Move on.
Hey, I'm bringing up a concern that I remember from two years.
Yeah, I mean, I could potentially look at that Friday, January second doesn't make sense necessarily to have everyone come in for one day there. So there could be some shifts by the time you see this as a second read.
That was the one I was gonna ask.
As per our agreement with the teachers' union, I did share a draft of this for them to provide feedback as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that would be the only piece of feedback. I feel like coming in on that Friday seems not necessarily the best. Yep. But it could be, I wonder if there could be like a teacher, teacher workday or something like prep before students coming in?
Yeah, so we have only three professional development days as part of our contract. So we use two of them on the front end.
So it wouldn't make sense there. Okay.
We can look at it.
So what would that mean, just moving it to? Yeah, it would just mean the last day would be Friday, June twelve. Yeah, I'd be.
Yeah, and I know we've talked about how school days in January are more valuable than school days in June. So, and I can appreciate that, but I just have a feeling that's gonna be hard dated.
Yeah.
Get people to come back.
I, I think a lot of people won't come.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Other comments or feedback?
Nope, looks great. So you're gonna take it as a first read?
So can I get a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six draft school calendar as a first read?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Allison, seconded by Katrina. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All there's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, Natalie.
Next, under my report is the FY twenty-six athletic budget. So continuing with our cycle of presenting, whether it's building-based or department-based budgets, tonight we'll be looking at both athletics and facilities. I am not Brian Phillips. He is at the athletic directors conference for the next couple of days. So I did offer to present it for him. I obviously am not gonna do it as much justice as he would since he is so passionate about our program and he has come several times to this committee to share some of the tremendous accomplishments of both of our student athletes as well as our coaches. But I will give it my best shot. So again, a lot of the focus since Brian joined us in twenty twenty has been on the student athlete and really emphasizing academics in addition to competition and really growing our coaches through a professional development series, really investing in education for our coaches so that our students are getting the best possible experience as student athletes at Pembroke High School. And I think in the first few slides, you see that. So just a quick glimpse at our class of twenty twenty-four and how many of those students that are in the top tier of their class academically are also single or multiple sport athletes. Another good data point there is National Honor Society. So of the thirty-six students that were inducted this past October, thirty-one of them are student athletes. So really showing that at Pembroke High School, we value a well-rounded student. And a lot of that comes into play with our athletics as well as our extracurriculars and clubs. I'm sure Brian probably would have spent thirty minutes on this slide about all of the amazing things that have been happening. As you all know, our girls tennis team was state champs. Our boys indoor track team was state champs. There are so many accolades that they barely fit on this page. You know, to have seventy-nine Patriot League All-Stars is amazing. To have five teams make it to the MIAA round of sixteen, again, huge accomplishments, especially for a school our size. These are really, really big numbers for a high school with an enrollment of less than seven hundred students. So just to reemphasize the focus on really quality coaching, to have three Boston Globe coaches of the year, and to have Jess Walls, our girls tennis coach, to be the MIAA coach of the year, those are. Great things to be said about our Pembroke High School staff too. Not to be outshadowed by our coaches, are our student athletes. So we have a tremendous call to service amongst our athletic community. Here in this photo, you see Olivia Sowersby, who is the only Pembroke MIAA student ambassador. So she was selected as a student ambassador for the statewide program. And she goes to professional development and conferences to talk about really the role of student athletes in emerging topics as well as challenges for our high school student athletes. She's joined by Alyssa Marcella, who is part of the ambassador program as well. There has been so many fundraisers this past year that it is, you know, difficult to talk about them all, but they have had a tremendous amount of support for local families, local charities, really close-to-home causes. We've had, we had a really tough fall here in Pembroke with a lot of loss. And I think our athletic community as well as our entire school community really stepped up to support families and students during those times. So our programs continue to be healthy. I think it's important to take a look at the percentage of students that are participating. To the point that Patrick was making earlier, obviously, our enrollment is declining, but our percentage of students that are involved in athletics is, is pretty constant. So this past fall, forty percent of our students were on an athletic team. We've seen some growth in our football number. So in years past, football had dwindled to the high thirties. This past year, we had fifty-seven students. So again, really regrowing that program due to the, the coaches there and the connections they're making with youth sports. In the winter, we've had tremendous growth in our indoor track program, much to our, our budget dismay. So we are, we spent much of the winter sending three buses worth of athletes to the Reggie instead of the two that we had been sending in the past.
But they're paying dividends.
They did. So to have the, the boys be the state champs and the girls to be the runner-up, that is, obviously speaks, speaks some great things about the program. But to have forty-five percent of our, our students enrolled in a winter sport is also, it's a huge number.
Huge.
Much greater than the five-year average of thirty-four percent.
That's, that's wild. That's almost half students.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really good.
Spring is a shorter, usually smaller season. Our teams are a little bit smaller, whether it's baseball, softball, tennis. Those, those team size are not as large as, you know, football or indoor track. We do have a really healthy outdoor track program. We have, at your last meeting, we discussed having a waiver for boys lacrosse. So a lot of focus for our spring sports is really growing that feeder program. So in the past, we've asked for waivers for softball. We've asked for waivers for boys lacrosse or girls lacrosse, depending upon the year. So really trying to make some connections with those coaches. There has been some fluctuation in the coaching staff with our spring sports in the past two years. You know, we've, we've had some changes, but I do think the folks that we have are the right people in the right places. And over the next year or two, you'll start to see some really positive trends with our spring sports as well. But again, our, our number of students this year, forty-one percent, is higher than our five-year average, so.
Quick question, if it's okay.
Um, what are some of the, just humor me because I don't know what the sports are when.
So what, uh, what are sports in the fall, spring, and winter?
Sure. So fall is boys and girls soccer, cross-country, boys and girls cross-country, volleyball, football, field hockey.
You don't have to know all of them.
Golf.
Just a couple.
Cheerleading is a fall and a winter sport. In the winter, we obviously have basketball, ice hockey, swimming, indoor track. In the spring, we have lacrosse, outdoor track, softball, baseball, boys and girls tennis.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you.
Wrestling, thank you.
Just sort of wrestling.
Thank you, yes.
Gymnastics.
In gymnastics. So we co-op our gymnastics program, but we do have a, a handful of students from Pembroke participating in gymnastics as well. So what is, what does the budget look like? So our structure in the past has been that the athletic director also serves some capacity as the facility's coordinator. I won't call it director. I'll call it coordinator. So obviously, we have an athletic director. We have fifty-nine paid coaching stipends. We have one athletic maintenance custodian whose salary is paid out of our revolving account. So we obviously collect fees for students to participate in athletics at the high school. If you've gone to some of our games, you know, we collect tickets at the gate. All of that gets deposited into our revolving account. And those funds offset costs associated directly with the program. About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contracted services. The next slide is gonna tell you a little bit more about how that breaks down. The cost of officials has increased significantly since COVID. There was a shortage of qualified officials following COVID. So the, the rates for those have gone up, and some supplies and materials associated with the various sports and various programs for about twenty-nine thousand. The bulk of our contracted service budget is in rentals. We've talked for the past couple of years about the increase in the price to rent ice. We are fortunate to have a rink in town, so Habermuck is our home rink for both our boys and girls program, but ice is very expensive. We rent space for gymnastics as well as we rent the pool at the Kingsbury Club for swimming. I know that Ryan, we did talk to you about the pool on the roof at the high school. We haven't found it yet.
Well, it's hard because, you know, the pool on the roof is heated.
So we don't have a pool, so we are renting space. Obviously, the rest of it is, is pretty mundane. Some league dues and entry fees for various meets, some field operations. So we are in our eighth year of the new turf field at Pembroke High School. We do, do all of the preventative maintenance ourselves.
Eighth year?
Yep. All of the preventative maintenance ourself. So there's a, there's a whole host of grooming and field paint and all of that is, is covered under the field maintenance and operations. We do contract with Brigham and Women's Hospital for athletic, athletic training services. So we have a full-time athletic trainer at Pembroke High School who is there, obviously, when students are competing in contests. But they're also running a strength and conditioning program for our students outside of seasons. They're there all summer long as well. So a great resource. We do recondition our football equipment each year. So that was about eight thousand dollars this past year. We are required to have police details at some of our games. So football games, hockey games require a police detail. We have some repairs on, you know, whether it's our John Deere tractor that we're cutting our fields with or, you know, any other field maintenance equipment. We are in a uniform replacement schedule, so we set aside ten thousand dollars each year. And there's a pretty hefty spreadsheet with lots of tabs that talks about what comes up each year as far as uniform replacement. And we have been really good about sticking to that. You know, obviously, it's one of the easier things to cut when you're running low on funds, but then you end up paying down the road for that. So we do try to keep on that as much as possible. Transportation is, is one of those cost items that has also grown exponentially since COVID. There is a shortage of bus drivers. We are fortunate here in Pembroke to own two of our own buses. We call them PM one and PM two. And they are driven most often by Diane Elliott and Mike Evans. And so we use them whenever we can for athletics. But there are often times that we need more than two buses going out for various trips. And at that point, we do need to contract with first student or another provider, and those, those costs add up pretty quickly.
Erin, before you move on, you mentioned the turf. I mean, you said eight years. I almost fell off my chair because it's the second one we put in. And it was about a million dollars, one point one, one point two million dollars, something like that to put in. Are, we're holding money aside to build a fund for when that then has to be replaced, correct?
Yep, I'm gonna go to that on the last side. I talked about the cost associated with game officials and offense staff, and then a breakdown of just where the supplies and equipment fall for our various sports. So that's footballs, baseballs, golf balls, all of that stuff falls under.
Is that split fairly evenly between girls' sports, boys' sports, or how it is?
It's split fairly evenly between girls' sports and boys', boy's sports. Spring sports are a little less expensive as far as consumables than some of the other sports, but it is a pretty, pretty even split between, between genders. So obviously, as an athletic department, we have goals. We really are looking at the, the full student and the full athlete, as I said. As I said a minute ago, we are fortunate enough to have a full-time trainer at the high school that provides a strength and conditioning program. That program has a series about nutrition, about recovery. I think as a student athlete, an injury is a big thing for kids and making sure that they're able to manage that, both on the physical end as well as the mental health end. It's really important that we have somebody that's working with our students and is a connection between our athletic program and our school nurse, because our school nurse is not necessarily at the basketball game when somebody sprains an ankle. So there's that constant communication there. And we do have a whole host of students that continue on in college to play sports, and so making sure that they have the support and resources, both them and their family, to navigate that process.
That's awesome. And I know it helps a lot with injury prevention, like you said.
Yep. We have been growing our student-athlete professional development program. So again, as I mentioned before, we do participate in the MIA Student Ambassador Program, but we have had a whole bunch of guest speakers also come to Pembroke High School and talk to our students, whether it's at Spring Sports Night or Fall Sports Night. You know, those that have had great success in athletics and those that have, you know, had some trials and tribulations as well, I think a few of you have come to some of them. And I think those are great stories for our students to hear, and I think it's a great kind of captive audience. It's rare if you're running something at nighttime that you get 50 people, let alone 400. So I think it's important to really use that captive audience there as well. The most important part of our program is our connection to the youth programs. That is something Brian has really focused his work on since he's come to us here in Pembroke, really pushing our coaches and our students to get more involved in our youth program. You know, if you come to the first football game, it's usually Pembroke Youth Football Night. I've seen the baseball kids playing with youth baseball kids. There's always some kind of camp or some kind of training running that our student athletes are running for our youth students. So really just growing that relationship. There's been some tremendous growth in the Pembroke Youth Football Relationship with our new coach, Sean Tarpe. You know, there's been some great work done with all our cross programs as well. So really making sure that families and students see Pembroke High School as a full athletic program and that our youth is really the feeder for us. We are fortunate to have huddle cameras available, both on our outdoor track and inside our gym, so you can live stream athletic events that are happening in those venues. We've had over 15,000 views, but it's great for you to be able to call up your grandparents and say, I know you can't come to the game, but you can watch it live. I know that that's been a great, great thing, a great addition for families. We are always constantly trying to improve our facilities. So a few years ago, we were fortunate through community preservation funds to get some sprinkler system out on our grass practice fields, but those grass practice fields see a lot of wear and tear, both with our student athletes as well as youth athletes and a lot of people that like to do four-wheeling on the weekends. So really, you know, focusing on improvement.
You're not encouraging the four-wheeling.
No, we're not. We're not. Really focusing on improving those fields, because they do get a tremendous amount of use. We just have one turf field, and it's impossible to get all of our teams out there at the same time. So really making sure that there's options for sports. We are, you know, it's great to partner with Pembroke Youth Soccer in the upkeep and maintenance of those fields at Habimuck, but we really want our grass fields right at Pembroke High School to be up to that caliber as well. So Brian has been working diligently on that. And, you know, we'd really like the athletic lobby there to be a little bit more welcoming. So I expect to see some schematics from him coming forward on how we'd like to do that.
Where are we in the backstops?
Well, we're going to go to that now.
I didn't see it on the list. That's probably us.
So there are obviously some capital improvements that we would like to make in the athletic department. The press box has been a conversation since I joined Pembroke Public Schools 15 years ago. I'm not really sure, and it's so much easier to blame the people that were here during the construction. I'm not sure why one wasn't part of the project. It is pretty standard to have a press box out there. We've had a bunch of different members of the community or community groups approach us about doing it. The piece about the turf press box that's difficult is it has to be ADA compliant and it has to have sprinklers. That's the new code. So that makes it a pretty exorbitant cost, but I know Brian is working with a few interested community parties right now to put something together. So in the next six to 12 months, I'd expect to see something about that. Scoreboard for the softball field. So we have gone to community preservation three times to ask for upgrades to the grass fields over there, to your point, including the addition of dugouts and backstops to bring baseball back to Pembroke High School. That project is not complete yet. We have not spent those funds, but we did do some significant improvements to the softball field three years ago, and there are some funds left in that project that will fund the scoreboard that's here. So we're able to get that.
Right, has a question.
Where do they play baseball now?
At Matake Sett and Magoon. So varsity plays at Matake Sett and the JV team plays at Magoon.
So there was money that wasn't used to put baseball there back?
So we had, when we asked for the sprinkler system on the grass field, it was a part of a four-phase project to get baseball back to Pembroke High School. We have completed phases one and two. We asked for and received the money for phase three. It just hasn't happened yet, and that is the backstops associated with baseball need to be dug, so.
And putting, and then that would make it so that they have the field back?
There's still a fourth piece, which is some of the fencing and other field maintenance that would need to happen before.
But that's all, the money's been approved for all four steps?
No, just through phase three. We haven't gone, we don't want to go for phase four until we've completed.
Okay, well, no, that's what I was, I just didn't even know that was, I have heard that, you know, there's the talk of moving it back. I just didn't know that there was. When do you think phase three will be finished?
So there was a lot of momentum to move baseball back to Pembroke High School, and Mike Trupiano was on the committee. There's less momentum now. Matake Sett is a great facility with great resources for families, and it's a great setup, but, you know, it's difficult for our students and our athletes to get to Matake Sett for practice or for games. And really, being a comprehensive high school where our athletics happen on the campus has always been the vision. I would say probably two years out from that.
I will say it's important, right, and for the reasons that the superintendent just said, and if I channel my, you know, my Trupiano for a minute, what I will tell you is, is it's almost unfair to those student athletes, because almost all student athletes practice, participate, swimming and gymnastics aside, at Pembroke High School, right, and on the campus and on the grounds. They can leave class and immediately get the practices, opposed to having to go to the other side of town. So Mike was a passionate advocate about this. I would like to almost see them named after Mike.
So that's what we did talk about, was putting a plaque on the backstop for Mike.
Because Mike was incredibly, incredibly passionate about this project and also spent decades behind, I think, this table and are incredibly grateful for his service. But we do have the money, right? It's just a matter of.
Yeah, we do. It's just, we're lean when it comes to folks that can bid projects, manage projects. And so some of the HVAC needs that have needed to happen quicker than anticipated have really taken the focus off some of the other capital projects. But obviously, we did go to CPC, we put together a proposal, the proposal was approved. It was approved at town meeting. The money is sitting there, it's just about getting to work.
Could we do summer work on that?
So in order to do it, you have to.
You gotta bid it now.
It's not even the bidding, we're shutting the field down, right? So it gets so much use that you have to think about it in a way. And really, you know, to put, to have that field look like the Habimuck field or look like a, like a good field, you've got to limit access and restrict access, and that's not currently what we do. So it's more than just the work needs to happen, there needs to be a philosophical shift in how open is the campus all of the time? How much can I use it as a citizen? How much wear and tear are we allowing on those fields? Because it's really, for actual grass, it's, you know, play on it, it rests, play on it, it rests. It's not the constant play that's getting now.
Well, because it would be chained off in theory, right?
It'd be fenced, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. See, that's my, because that's how.
Can we have that as an gender item at some point to talk about how open the campus is?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think our fun Brian threw on basketball hoops, he did mention it to me like two weeks ago for the first time, and I have been, you know, as Mary Beth and Jess and I have been going to some games at the high school in the winter, I did notice that the hoops need replacing. We did not ask for that as capital for, on the town warrant, but it's something we can look at in the future. And to my point, the turf, the useful life of a turf field is quoted at 10 years. We have had this current field for eight years, which means there's two years left on it, but remember, we had our first field for 14 years. So we have been taking an incredible high level of care of our field. So I do anticipate it'll last longer than the 10, but we have been saving for the replacement, to your point, Patrick. So we have an agreement with youth sports where each of youth soccer, youth football, and youth lacrosse pay a portion towards that fund as well. We've been really, you know, using our athletic user fees that are deposited in our revolving account to set aside the funds, so that, obviously, we're not going to have $2 million in there, but we will have a good chunk when it comes time to replace.
Question for transportation. How much is it generally per team for transportation costs? Is there even a way to know that based on, like, you know, having baseball be away, having, you know, I know some teams play more often than others, kind of thing, too?
There's not a fair way to do it, right? So what we do with our two buses is we tend to send our buses to the further-away location because first student charges by the hour and by the mile, so.
Oh, yeah.
Smart.
We can, I could get a better breakout for you.
Well, I'm just curious, like, there's, I don't know how to.
But I mean, if you think about it, right, there are things that don't immediately come to mind when you've got indoor track going to the Reggie regularly, right? That's a pretty big, a pretty big cost. You have football that is constantly sort of out and they're home away, home away, home away. You know, so there's, it does really vary and depend on the sport. It's kind of hard to.
Well, and some only do once a week and some like three times a week.
Yeah, when we're using our buses, so when we're using PM1 and PM2, we shuttle whenever we can, so that, I mean, as a student athlete, if it's a sport that has all three levels, freshman, JV, and varsity, you could be at a field for five, six hours after school. So we do try to shuttle back and forth as much as we can. If we're using first student, they don't shuttle.
And so when we have sports that can't practice at the high school, do the athletes have to take a bus to and from practice?
Never from, to practice. So we do supply a bus over to Matake Sett after school, over to the Pembroke Country Club for golf. Swimming is a little bit different, gymnastics is a little bit different. Their practices aren't necessarily right after school all the time. Hockey is parent or student drive both ways, but.
Sometimes very early.
Yeah.
Can you remind people why we use first student and how we, you know, because I know we have a contract with them, and I think there's been questions about. Yeah, so you just reminded people. We have a contract with first student, so we bid our transportation as a three-year contract with two one-year options at our discretion. So that includes both our day-to-day, like, to and from school transportation as well as athletic transportation and field trip transportation. So it's one contract for all of those things. First Student is the only bus company that has bid on our transportation contract for the past 15 years or so, but we do bid it each time to see if there's a cheaper option out there.
One question I had was just around the, when we need an extra bus and we're contracting with first student, is that need, is that cost potentially getting to a point where we may need another bus that Pembroke owns, or is that not remotely close?
So we don't have another licensed person to drive a bus, so.
I see. So no.
I think maybe 17 or 18 years ago, we offered for our maintenance staff to also get CDL certified at our expense so that they could drive our buses. We currently only have two left that have CDL certification, and there's not necessarily anyone that's super interested in it, because I ask all the time. But when we are looking for a third bus, and we, obviously, we have to go to first student first, there are a lot of times that first student can't fulfill that request, so then we go to Ingalls Bus, which is in Hanover, Lucine, which is another provider on the South Shore, but.
Okay. Something we're keeping an eye on.
So again, it's not as well done as Brian would have done it.
Other questions?
It was great, gave it my all. Wait till we get to the syllabus.
So I did just want to make a comment on the athletic program. First, they do, they do an amazing job stressing the balance between athletics and academics. And being a student athlete in almost every one of our sports with almost, I would say, with every one of our coaches is a big deal, and it gets stressed a lot. And I think it's something that is awesome at Pembroke High School. The other thing I will say is, this program, you know, we talk, we talk a lot about the arts, we talk a lot about band and the positive effects and correlations that that has on different areas of academics. This program really develops and has turned out incredible student leaders. They providing kids a work ethic, they're providing kids teamwork, they're providing kids leadership abilities and capabilities and mentoring ship. We are so fortunate to have incredible coaches that day in and day out give so much more back to the kids that they coach than simply the skills on the field. And I think, you know, Brian has fostered a culture here that's a culture that's about winning in life as much as it is about winning on the field, and we are really, really lucky to have that. So he's not here, but please thank him for us.
Oh, I'm sure he's watching in real time.
I hope not. I hope he's having way more fun at the AD conference.
Are you good if I do vocation?
Yes.
Tom, do you want to come sit at the table in case they ask me a question that I can't answer?
Come on down.
Yep. Sure.
Trying to introduce Tom.
Come on over. This is Tom Hickey, he's the superintendent at South Shore Tech. He has been an integral volunteer in our work to look at what it would look like to join South Shore Tech, so he's kind enough to come to our planning meetings. This is his second or third school committee appearance here, all out of the goodness of his heart and his love for vocational education and the desire to bring our Pembroke students into the loop there. So I'm going to try my best, and, you know, if there's specific questions about the project at South Shore Tech, that's definitely something that Tom is much, much more well-suited to answer. We also have another celebrity in the audience, Mr. Squeezy is back there. I don't care if you want to come and sit at the table also, or if you want to sit back there, totally up to you.
I'll sit to the one only Tom.
Okay, all right. You're going to have to listen to me first before Tom gets a chance.
We're going to ask you for money, so.
So just a little bit of an overview, I'm going to just take you through a little bit of what South Shore Tech has to offer. Talk a little bit about where we have been as a district as far as historical enrollment with vocational students, not just who's enrolled, but who's applied in the past. Talk about some of the funding estimates associated with our potential joining of South Shore Tech, and then what our next steps are. So there are nine member towns right now to South Shore Tech, Marshfield being their newest with their first group of students joining this year. Obviously, we would be looking to join to be a 10th town, and 10 is a much better number than nine as far as I'm concerned. That's a rendering from the building website of what the new building could potentially look like. Looks like there's a lot of available parking there, so that's nice. But there are other benefits to joining South Shore Tech. So when you are part, when you are a member town to the Vocational District, the students that are enrolled in those programs provide service back to the communities and towns from which they're from. So there's been a whole host of projects in all of the nine communities that are currently part of South Shore Tech, but when going through some of the accomplishments, it was great to see there are definitely things here that we could benefit from. In a lot of places, the Horticulture Program has donated food to the fresh vegetables and produce to the food pantry. There has been a lot of work in veteran services and across a few different towns. Some renovation works at Town Hall, they did some painting of some police vehicles, so all really exciting things that we could take advantage of as well. I think some of the digital arts and marketing students designed communications, did some banners for the town of Marshfield. So joining has other benefits just than directly to our students, right? There's a benefit that brings back to our town as well. So I thought it was really nice to see all, this is just like two or three from each town, but there was an extensive list of benefits for those nine member towns.
Nice.
Just an overview of what they offer at South Shore Tech. Some of them are traditional shops that we're pretty much all familiar with, and some of them are pretty new and innovative. I know that part of the conversation with the new building is to add plumbing and vet tech as additional shop in courses of studies over there to offer. But what I wanted to highlight is that South Shore Tech is also a comprehensive high school. They have athletics, they have other programs, they have clubs. Here's a listing of what they offer. It's pretty similar to what we have here at Pembroke High School as well. So again, focusing on a well-rounded student isn't just a philosophy here in Pembroke. It's a philosophy at South Shore Tech also. You know, and I know that there's a, a, a good portion of students participate in athletics there. I think you had a big hockey win this past year. But again, when we went, it was after school. When we went for a visit last year, we were able to see some of the clubs as well. So again, just a high level of engagement, student engagement at South Shore Tech, similar to what we see at Pembroke High School. Kids that like their school stay after and do things after school. So vocational enrollment in Pembroke has looked a little different for the past 15 years or so. Many of you will remember a time where we were part of Silver Lake Regional High School. So our students had both a comprehensive high school and a vocational opportunity there. But we did split from, from Silver Lake 20 years ago at this point. We're in year 21. And since then, we have had students still access Silver Lake as a vocational option for our students as well as the traditional access to Norfolk Aggie, which you can see there in the first column. And we've had variable amounts of students attend South Shore Tech in the past. But what you can see most surprisingly towards the past few years is we've had very few students, if any, gain access to Silver Lake or South Shore Tech. So there has been some change in the enforcement of the rules associated with enrollment at technical high schools. And so you have to take all of the students in your member towns that meet the minimum qualifications for entry before you can look at non-member students. We all know there's been a huge surge of students that are interested in vocational education. So they're filling the seats with the kids that are coming from their towns. And so there's no capacity left to, to, to plug in some of our Pembroke students. We have had some success in, in a couple of one-off spots, whether at Silver Lake or South Shore Tech, where there is an opening in a less popular shop and we can slate in a sophomore at Pembroke High School that's looking to transfer. Or if we have a student whose family used to live in Hanover or has moved to Pembroke, they stay there. So there's ones and twos across the board here for some of those things and a lot of it is that. It's not a, it's not a pure enrollment of our, our incoming ninth graders. You can see when it was at its highest year, about 3% of our students were enrolled in a vocational high school experience. And that is just something that, as you can see down the bottom with 1.2, we're not able to meet that need anymore. So really, what is it that we can do as a town to give this as an option for students again? And that's a lot of what the work of the region, regional planning committee has, has focused on. So just saying who goes doesn't tell the story of who was accepted. But here you can, who was interested. Here you can see our acceptances across the board. Again, as I said, in the past three years, we haven't had any students accepted to Silver Lake or South Shore Tech. We have seen a small increase in our number of students that have been accepted to Norfolk Aggie. I am happy to report that there is definitely an increased number of students for next year's ninth grade class that have applied to both the Aggie and Bristol Aggie. So we are hopeful that students can find a home at, at one of those, too. But that is, an agricultural high school is not the same as a vocational high school either. It is a completely different experience, but at least there is some opportunity for experience there. But we've had more kids apply than obviously go. And so I think that is more the number to look at. How many of our students self-identify as interested in something other than a traditional high school experience at Pembroke High School? In our highest year, 47 students. So in 2021, 47 students. That first full school year after COVID, 47 eighth graders applied to go to vocational school. Only 15 enrolled. I think, I don't think the interest has fallen off as the application numbers show. I think the word is out that kids are not getting in. It is an extensive application process, right? So there's the application, there's an interview, there's working with your guidance council, getting your transcripts over there. And though some of our kids really have the bandwidth to do that, others are like, if I'm not, if I know I'm not going to get them, I'm not even going to try. So I don't necessarily think that interest has fallen off in the past two years, but I do think word is out that acceptances have fallen off in the past two years. So if we were to successfully join South Shore Tech, what does that mean for the number of kids that we would be able to send? So Tom was nice enough to take a, take a look at enrollment. So figuring out the number of seats that you would be entitled to as a member town is really a function of looking at your projected enrollments into the future of your eighth grade classes or middle school classes. So the best estimate, and I'll say it's an estimate at this time because we're still in the, the figuring it out phase of it, is listed down there in the bottom in yellow. So we would be about a 10% share of enrollment there. So for our first year of students going, we'd have 20 seats. For year two, 17, 21, so on. It's about a 21 student per year average of seats at South Shore Tech. So at full enrollment, grades nine through 12, we could have about 84 students there.
And it looked, just for those who can't see, some of the other towns are at like around 20, 13, 23, 12, 31, 20. So we're, again, it's based on enrollment, but that's about what other towns.
Right, so a smaller town like Cohasset obviously has fewer seats, 12, 13s. A larger town like Marshfield could have up to 34 or 37 students depending upon the eighth grade year.
And if people want to look at this more closely, it'll be on the website.
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
Yep.
So just a couple of quick questions on this, right? So based on enrollment numbers from when it was still a viable option is probably the best way for me to put it. It looks as though even if I take out the folks that were going to the Aggies, you know, I mean, if you have somewhere between 35 and 45, 20 is absolutely the ability to fill the seats. So the want is there, is, is I guess my point. If we don't fill the seats, what happens?
So currently, if we don't fill, if, if a member town doesn't fill their seats, they go back into the pot for the other member towns. So you're not, I mean, at the end of the day, if there were zero kids looking to enroll, you'd be financially responsible for your seats, but that has never been the experience. I, I believe that at South Shore Tech, you're able to redistribute them to the other towns.
Right, it would, it ultimately would impact the share of the operating budget. But we, with, you know, we're looking at about 400 applications for 180 freshmen seats. So they get redistributed.
But that, that was actually going to be my follow-up question. So if instead of 20 seats, I have 15 seats, does my share of the operating budget requirement go down by 25%?
Probably close to that. We, when we assess our towns, we rely, the biggest chunk of the assessment is, of course, the chapter 70, minimum local contribution. For all operating costs that are above the MLC, we rely on the most recent October 1 report. So in that regard, yes.
Okay, so it's October 1 enrollment, which is what we base everything off of, too?
After the chapter 70 formula, we use enrollment to calculate capital, debt, and operating costs above the minimum. It has nothing to do with the state formula. It's as simple as the number of kids from your town in the numerator.
And do you mind if I ask just one more question on that?
I'm here, I'm here until you kick me out.
Don't say that, you'll be here all the time. On, on the debt piece, right? So I know you're building a new building. Are you looking at that debt service annually in the enrollment annually to get our percentage of that debt service?
Great question. We spent almost all of last year going through a very deliberative process to amend our regional agreement. And we now have a regional agreement that calculates debt share. In the first year of debt service, there is a three-year lookback average. And from the second year of debt service on, let's assume a 30-year note, whatever you're doing, right? Second year on, it's a four-year rolling average. And that was an acknowledgement that anyone who gets locked in whenever the debt is authorized, regardless of future enrollment trends, could be looking at a time when in 30 years of enrollment, a lot can change.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So, so we've, we've tried to manage the fluctuations by having a four-year average so that nobody reaps the benefit or suffers the spike as much in, in one year.
Which could be, you know, if it's less for you, that's great. But then the other towns are more and it could be devastating from an operating budget perspective. So it's a fairer way to, to distribute.
Yeah, we're, we're happy the towns thought so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
So there's three parts, as we've defined them as a regional planning committee for the process for joining. The first part is entering into a regional agreement, similar to, to what Tom was just speaking about, to join South Shore Tech as a member town. So some of that work has, is obviously fresh in, in their minds at South Shore Tech because they just did it with Marshfield. So we would not necessarily be reinventing the wheel, but we would be working with the school committee for South Shore Tech to amend the regional agreement for us to join as a member. So that would be part one. The, part two would be the debt exclusion override for our portion of the building project. I'm going to go into each of these a little bit more on the next slides. And then part three, as Patrick alluded to in the beginning, would be an operational override to fund the costs associated with sending students to South Shore Tech. So part one, again, working with the school committee to propose changes to their current regional agreement. Again, I, I don't necessarily know that there'd be a, a ton of changes warranted or needed since you just did this work not that long ago with another community. We're not talking about decades since they've opened up their regional agreement. We'd like to bring the updated regional agreement language to the 2025 Fall Town Meeting for approval. So really getting this committee to, to be in favor of moving this to the townspeople would give us the opportunity to get out there and educate and then to, to, to bring into Fall Town Meeting the regional agreement.
I have a process question on that.
Sure.
The Fall Town Meeting is actually in the next session of this committee as well as the Board of Selecting.
Correct.
So we could not take a motion in this session to move it for the fall? Is that, do you either of you know?
So Bill was going to get a legal opinion about that. So when we talked about it at our planning committee.
I've heard different things.
There was conversation that you could, you guys could put a placeholder for a Fall Town Meeting warrant article. Bill was just going to confirm.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems weird that as a sitting committee, we would be limited on something.
Well, the, the issue is we're taking a vote for something that's going to happen when potentially the makeup of your committee could look different. What I wouldn't want us to do, I'm asking for a very specific reason, right? I would not want us to take a vote before the May 17 election, have the vote go one way or another, and then have someone call that vote into question. What I'd like to know is if we take a vote to move it forward or the vote to move it for, or to not move it forward, it needs, I need to know as chairman of this committee that it is a legally binding vote. That, that, and I think it's good for us to understand that.
Yeah, no, I, I cannot understand. It just seems hard to believe that it wouldn't be binding vote, but.
It's just because it trans, it, it transfers sessions and community sessions, so.
So the next piece of that, once successful at the 2025 Fall Town Meeting, would be for each of the member towns then to vote to allow us to join. So you need two-thirds of the member towns, which is six out of nine, if my math is correct. And that would happen at their spring town meetings in 2026. So we need to vote saying we want to join first and then they need to vote saying we'd love to have you join. And that would be that step. Once that piece has happened, then it goes to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for approval. They have until the end of the calendar year, I believe, to do such approval. Obviously, the, the goal is that it wouldn't take them that long since it isn't, they've already looked at the regional agreement in, in relation to what happened in Marshfield. So there shouldn't be as many questions. But again, they do have till the end of the calendar year, which would then sync up for us potentially sending our first round of students to South Shore Tech in the fall of 2027.
Was it a full year for Marshfield, though? They didn't have to wait a whole year after voting, right? They got kids in that same year.
The.
No, so they voted two May's ago.
But didn't they have kids?
And they went this year.
Okay.
Is that, is that right?
So we have a, we have a freshman cohort from Marshfield, 24, 25 school year.
Okay, so, so.
But the, but the town meeting for that was the preceding spring because the commissioner had until the end of calendar '23 and no community officially becomes a member by their rules until July 1st of the, of the subsequent year. What we were allowed to do thankfully was prior to that admission date, because we do admissions in the winter, we were able to treat Marshfield as a member community in the sense of the admissions process because of what Erin was saying earlier about technically they're still non-resident. But the department understood that for all practical reasons, they didn't join to wait another year before they could actually get kids in the building, so.
So you have sophomores from Marshfield?
Freshmen.
We, we have freshmen, but we were able to engage them in the application and offer them seats.
Got it.
Prior to them becoming a member.
So I, I just want to go through the timeline to make sure everyone's clear because this, it gets convoluted, right? So if in the fall Pembroke goes to town meeting and it's approved, right? And I assume the debt exclusion is approved and the operating override is approved, correct?
Right, so the way we have been thinking about it is to have the regional agreement approval in the fall and have the payment pieces be in the spring.
So let me, again, just separate it then, just because again, to be clear. So in the fall, we approve at town meeting the regional agreement. You can then take action and engage, correct?
Yes, so if I could just take a half a step back. I think that from, from March until the summer is really where the first wave of work needs to be done and that is to figure out the terms and conditions. I would also say, Mr. Chairman, that our own school committee needs to take up the matter. I have a, I have a regional planning subcommittee. They're fully informed about what this committee is looking into and having, and moving this conversation forward. But that, that would go from my regional planning subcommittee to my full school committee and they have the authority to then officially put forward an amendment. But there's no amendment if the parties aren't in agreement.
I understand.
So by the summer of '25, we've got something on someone's desk at Desi.
Yeah.
They've looked it over and then we pick up the story with the fall. So presumably, and well, I shouldn't say presumably, but my sense is that if, if there was a vote at a Fall Town Meeting not conditioned on a debt exclusion, that's a very risky, very risky move.
I don't see that happening.
Correct, so, so just to emphasize if, if people are following the timeline, my understanding would be that for the sake of the community, this, it might be that a town meeting votes to accept the language of the regional agreement amendment and dot, dot, dot contingent upon.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and then, yes, I think the story then picks back up in the spring where at the same time that our nine communities have their town meetings from the first week of April to the first week of June, as Erin said, six of those nine towns are in the affirmative. That checks that box in terms of the district approval. And then it's back to see regarding the debt exclusion, what happens in, in Pembroke.
Right, I got it.
Yeah.
So, but what you really need is for this committee to give a show of support for moving forward with the agreement.
I, I think that sends a clear message to my school board to, to, to accelerate the engagement. And you also deserve to have regular updates through the regional planning committees on what are the terms and conditions? What did you, you know, Erin and I have talked to many occasions about, well, what was the model from Marshfield? And do we replicate that model? Because that could, that could save us a lot of time in bringing the matter to, to some sort of conclusion. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So the second part or the vote, part two, would be the debt exclusion override. This would be targeted for the spring of '26. And so Tom was nice enough to put together some numbers for the regional planning committee to look at. Bill Shinard, who's our town manager, also sits on that planning committee. We had a lot of conversation about interest rates and really what's conservative and what's out of this world. So Bill did a little bit of different work on, on the number. He felt more comfortable using a 4.25% interest rate on the borrowing. So these numbers reflect that. There's two different ways that we can talk about funding the project. It is level principal and level debt, I think are the two words. So again, one, the, the payment stays the same across all 30 years. That's the red line you see there, 167.92. The other one, it fluctuates year one to the, to the lowest year of the project. So, you know.
What would be the total override that we'd be asking for roughly? Do we know?
The way a debt exclusion works is that there is no specific number, which doesn't help educate voters. There's only the, there would be an aggregate ballpark. But the actual language of a debt exclusion ballot question simply, is that, simply, is asking the voters, will they agree to exclude this debt from under the tax.
So the number we're using is 20 million dollars.
I mean, no, that, that's, that's, so I get the technicality on that, but nobody's going to understand that. Everyone's going to be like, how much is it?
20 million.
And then they're going to say, how much is it going to affect my taxes?
Correct, so it's a 20 million dollar debt exclusion override. Obviously, depending on the, the type of, of loan repayment, it would fluctuate from $156 to $168 on the average home price, which is $601,000 here in Pembroke at this point. And what we did talk about was making vote one, like you just said, the joining contingent upon the successful passage of a debt exclusion as well as an operational override. The third part is the operational override. So we would need additional funds in our operating budget in order to send kids to South Shore Tech. So those costs include tuition and transportation. Here you can see some rough estimates of what it would cost for the 21 seats per year and the full enrollment of 84 seats. Tom was nice enough to share the range of member tuitions. Whitman is the lowest at 11,226. Norwell is the highest at 18,913. For planning purposes, I just use the average, $16,001. The, the piece about tuition that is never really known until you know who the kids are is the sped increments. So any IEP services that a student needs are billed on a per-student basis. So not anymore.
As a member community.
It's a flat.
It's, it's baked in.
Right, so we wouldn't know whether our 20% of the ninth graders or 40% of the ninth graders till we knew who the ninth graders were, so. So in addition to that, we obviously have some other pieces that we'd need to work out through our regional agreement. Some of it is capital, some of it is stabilization. I just use the Marshfield model for the stabilization costs. You know, Marshfield's at the time, their agreement has them paying $400,000 into the stabilization fund. They were allowed to pay that over a 10-year time period. That shows that the other communities that have been paying into it as a new member community, that you're also making that same commitment to that as well, so.
The only thing I would say, right, because we've got this, at full enrollment, this would represent an increase to operating budget of roughly 1.75 to $2 million. That's in today's tuition dollars.
Correct.
Right, so tuition's going to increase. You, you guys are good, but let's be real, tuition's going to increase. I, I think when we put this together, knowing that we won't be in full enrollment year one, we may want to think about a stepped model, right?
Right, but I think to your point that tuitions will increase, capital costs shouldn't increase greatly in a brand-new building, right? So that piece of the assessment would stay.
No, no, I agree, but my point is the operation. No, no, I agree, but my point is, the operational override piece, I don't know that I would say is just one point seven five to two million dollars. You wanted, you, we need to go and ask the community for enough funds to sustain this for a period of time. Um, so we just, I think we have to think about that. I also think stepping in, which seems a little strange, but to your point, I don't think we would be twenty-one students or twenty, whatever it is, twenty students year one. We should think about that step, because it's just, it's less impactful immediately to people.
Would that be override multiple years?
No, which, but you could have an override that totals this, that draws in X year one, X year two, X year three, whatever it is.
Right, but on the next slide, you'll see that the suggestion was whatever is the buffer in the first year of the override you use to pay up into the stabilization, to pay up into the others, so.
Which, that's fine, too, right? Because then transportation was not a question, which also won't stay.
But transportation is reimbursed through, through regional trips, so.
Not a hundred percent, though, right?
Some, some years, it's close.
Yeah, we're budgeting ninety, we're budgeting ninety percent reimbursement, and the, the governor's budget suggests ninety-five. It's.
It's been as low as seventy, I think, with the.
Yeah, it's, it's better than it used to be.
It's much better than it used to be, but it is a political football that is not held harmless from, like, chapter seventy would be, so. We have to be conservative, but that is all, that is baked into the operating assessment, yeah.
Question on the transportation. Would students who go to vocational schools also pay the bus fee?
So because we get reimbursed for regional transportation, we can't charge them a bus fee?
We can't charge them, that's not an option, okay, got it. Um, also, I know, I see, well, actually, I'll let you go, and then I'll ask my question after.
Sure. Um, so the cost associated, again, would be the debt exclusion, um, the thirty-year debt exclusion, which is about twenty million dollars. You saw from the range, it could be anywhere from a hundred and fifty-six to a hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year on the property tax. Um, I had Bill run the numbers on, what, a two million dollar, um, operational override would be for the town? That's a two hundred and eighty-two dollar increase to the average house property tax. Again, I think the stabilization and the transportation work themselves out through the kind of buffer in, in the override the first couple of years, as well as regional transportation. So I don't think there, there's a huge impact of those two items, um, to the, to the dollar figure. But again, the total cost to taxpayers to join would be about four hundred and fifty dollars a year.
My question was going to be, and I don't know how, um, you know, other school districts handle this. I know sometimes, um, for these types of decisions, obviously, there's folks that are on fixed incomes. And I'm just wondering, is there any, are there, have there been any creative solutions for, um, those community members? Like, potentially, um, some kind of fund where you could apply if you are an older, elder person and you're on a fixed income and people could donate, you know? I don't know if there's ways that we could plan for that to make it.
It'd have to be funded by the town.
That would have to be town, right?
Yeah, I'm happy to ask, that's, that's fine. I mean, I know in some communities you can volunteer and work, like, at the community center to offset your taxes.
That's, that's different, though, than what you're talking about, right? So we have that.
Sure.
In Pembroke, right? If you're over a certain age, you can get an offset to your property taxes doing different types of things. Um, that pool has shrunk, actually, over the last few years, not grown. What I'm hearing you ask is, if you're a senior citizen on a fixed income, could you be excluded from the four hundred and fifty dollars and have that covered via a town fund? Right, so that's, here's the issue with that, right? That sounds great, but you have to have a fund that is going to sustain itself, right? No debate, almost like a mini endowment fund, which means, you know, let's say if you have a hundred people that are ultimately doing that, that's forty-five thousand dollars a year. So you need a fund, probably five, six hundred thousand dollars to generate self-sustaining revenue to be able to do that. Getting that level of donation is going to be very difficult. I, I would not weigh something this important on something like that.
Yeah, and I don't know the, the details for how it could go or should go, or if we could do that. I'm just supposing it as an option for us to discuss.
So I, I think that the important thing, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Are there grants available that we could apply for to, like, offset those costs? Or is that not?
There, there, there can be, right? You know, and a grant is a one-time influx of capital or of cash, right? There, there could be. I think when you're talking about something this important and this large from a dollar perspective, we have to look at it from an overall affordability perspective, but also a results perspective to these kids. Right, and ultimately, what's going to be delivered? And then you got to put it before the town to make a call, right, and, and to make a vote. It, the, the piece about, you know, the, the fixed income piece is always an issue when you're talking about an override. Um, but the town did come out for a public safety building, and the town did come out for a new community center, right? They have found things that are really important that we're willing to fund and, and we're willing to pay for. I think the reason why, personally, I would strongly suggest having run several overrides in my tenure behind this desk, you need to educate people as to the why, right? You need to be able to say to folks, this is why this is important. This is where the funding sits. This is why the funding is important. That takes time, right? So taking the time between now and the fall to educate the why, and then between the fall and the spring, when you get to the override, I mean, when we did the override for the roughs, it's a rough.
You get me every time.
When we did the override for the roughs, which was five and a half million dollars, we held twenty-one public meetings, and we were being reimbursed in the Commonwealth, like.
Fifty percent, it was buy one, get one free.
Right. So, so, you know, and that was for a much smaller piece. That took about seven months to do. When we had the operational override a few years ago for the schools, we did the same thing. I, I literally, my voice was so hoarse I could not speak by the time we went to vote. Now, that vote passed by two, you know, by like sixty, forty, first operational and only operational override, by the way, to ever pass. I'm super proud of that. But these things take time, because we, and I think that happened, because we took the time to explain the why over and over and over again to people. It's really, really important to do.
Which is what our plan is, right? So obviously, um, what we talked about at regional planning was kind of peeling off a couple of members of that group to work on the regional agreement. I don't think it's fruitful to have nine, ten, twelve people working, working on it. So we talked about really creating a subgroup to work, um, more closely on that, but really spending the time from April through September about, to offer information sessions for the community. And those can look different, depending on who the audience is. To your point, Katrina, I can imagine, you know, presenting at the council on the aging, the questions are going to be different than presenting to the Bryantville PTO, right? So I, I really, really tailoring that, um, and, and the message so that, that everybody, all stakeholders, whether you have kids in the district, or grandkids in the district, or no kids at all, um, understand the importance of, of bringing that option to our students. Um, obviously, the next step would be to place that warrant article on the fall town meeting, and then to continue through the process with the, with the May debt exclusion and operational override votes.
Awesome.
I don't remember offhand, but, I mean, I think it overwhelmingly passed town meeting to create this. Yep. So to me, it's a no-brainer to push this through, but I understand that there might be a need to wait. But, um, a question I guess I have is what, what looks, what does it look like at Pembroke High School, taking eighty to a hundred students out? Like, what happens in five years to Pembroke High School? Like, what does that look like?
Well, it.
And then plus just the, you know, aging out of.
Sure, so we have our fourth grade enrollment now is higher than our current eighth grade enrollment, right? So we have a little bit of a bubble that will move its way up as we go through. So it's probably not a net eighty from the current six ninety-seven at the high school, but you're probably going to hover around six twenty-five, six thirty, um, for a high school enrollment, which is a really small high school. Um, you know, it could facilitate conversations about having a seven through twelve building. It could also mean that we'd have to offer some less things, and that is a function of the number of kids, not the fact that vocational is an option, just like what, what we were talking about earlier. If there's fewer students, then you need fewer sections of English. We're still going to offer English, but there's just fewer sections of it.
We're just looking at the sports teams, like, are we going to be able to field a, you know?
Maybe.
I don't know. It's, 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 it's something to think about when we do have such a small high school to begin with.
But I don't think it would decimate Pembroke High School, right? I think we would still have a healthy high school. Um, I think six hundred, six hundred and thirty, six hundred and forty kids is still a good, a good-sized high school that, you know, we are so grateful and fortunate to offer a huge program of studies. Um, I would obviously feel strongly about continuing to offer that same level of choice for kids, but there would just be fewer sections with fewer kids.
Katrina. One question I had is just around, and I know that this is, there's a lot to think about with it, but potentially looking at school choice if we get to that point where enrollment is at a certain point. Um, I know that's something we've avoided, but could be part of the conversation as well later.
And we're going to have our school choice hearing probably the first.
We might have it April twenty-ninth.
I was gonna say, maybe, maybe the first meeting in May, it's always made around there. We, we, and we can address that, there are pluses and minuses.
Absolutely.
Um, ultimately, to, um, um, to, to that version of school choice. There's lots of school choice possibilities out there that I think could be talked about, but the one that's, we can currently do, I think, is, is something that we can absolutely discuss.
What is the, I don't want to say max capacity, what is, like, the safe capacity at the high school for students?
A thousand fifty is a good, solid number for us. We've been a little bit over that in the past, and we did teeter on needing some mobile classrooms, but a thousand fifty is a good, good number.
We had some when I was here.
And then my other question is, what's the school committee makeup? Like, how does your school committee work for?
Sure, it's an appointed school committee, uh, three-year terms, and appointed by the, the respective select boards.
And they're, are they all on the same threes?
Staggered, and, um, one, one representative from each community.
Are they school committee members that are in, already school committee members in the town that had just got appointed?
Good question. The, uh, none of my committee members, I don't think there's a prohibition to that, but none of my committee members serve in the, uh, in their zip code K to twelve school committee.
Okay, yeah.
So it's appointed, not elected?
That's right.
Got it.
Yeah, by, by the select board.
So I guess my question is, is, um, for next steps, uh, if we find out the legal, um, it, you know, there is no legal issue with voting now, how soon would we vote? Because I keep thinking, like, we have so much education to do, we have to move forward, like, just even planning the meeting.
So I, my preference, if there's no legal prohibition, my preference would be to come before this committee and ask this committee before the end of this term to put a placeholder for a warrant article on the fall town meeting. That, that, so, that's between now and May sixth, yeah.
Because four of the five of us are the same, so it's still, right, fine, a majority.
Right, I would hope sooner rather than later, just because the education piece is so important.
Right, but we can start talking about it now, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think, so the education can absolutely happen now. So there's, there's a couple of things. I think giving the community some surety that either, and we can take action or the selectmen can take action. Does not have to be both, it is an or, not an and. I would like to give the community some assurance that this is going to set on a fall town meeting, so that they then can begin to rally and, and get things moving. And it does help a bit, because there's, there's a surety that this is ultimately going to happen. So between now and our first meeting in May, um, if we get the legal opinion, we can by all means add it, um, to an early April meeting. I, I don't see that as being an issue.
And what's the, um, when do we, so we have to let them know by May? Uh, whether it's going, when do we have to let, let the, uh, town, town know we want this on the warrant? Like, two months before?
No, so, no, so the warrant, so.
Will open and close in like eight days' span.
I am not going to comment on that for fear of my own life. Um, but, but the fall town meeting will open over the summer. And it will close in a certain timetable that a very adept, very brilliant, very wise woman in that office manages and handles every single time this happens. What I'd like, but if we do it before the session ends, right? So like I said, in April or May, it's there, and the placeholder is there already, right? Which is why I'd like to get it done, if, if we can, by the will of the committee. But my preference is that, to bring it forward.
And then if we, as the makeup of the committee, would then be voting on what the language looks like for the warrant? Like, the, you know, this, you know, the, the contingencies, right? Like, that's, would be the current.
So once you, once you put the placeholder on for the language, the language is whatever the regional committee and the South Shore Tech school committee agree on.
You can.
Not us, so wait, hold on, so we can't.
On the fall warrant.
Yes, but we want to have it contingent, but that could, somebody.
The contingent on the other votes is absolutely up to, that's how, well, I'm assuming that's how you're moving it forward as a placeholder.
Right, that's, so what, what, so hold on, time out, let, time out. We will move forward a warrant article that will read something like, "The agreed-upon Pembroke Regional Agreement with South Shore Vo-Tech, contingent upon favorable passing of a debt exclusion override and an operating override, you know, post-spring town meeting, that, that type of thing."
I thought you were asking if this committee was going to vote on the terms of the regional agreement.
No, 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 I'm talking about, like, the wording that makes sure that it's contingent on these three things.
When we bring, when we bring forward that motion for us to discuss, that will be there in the discussion as part of the ultimate checks and balances to make sure that, that that is entered in. But, yeah, that, that would be part of what we would put forward.
So, yeah, that's, that's what it is.
One question I had is just about, and this, this might already be happening with, um, the committee. You all have been talking to folks, but I know Marshfield just went through this. So is there, um, a, a plan to have a conversation with those folks, or a couple of the school committee members, or the superintendent, to see if they have tips or anything like that?
Sure, I've been working with Tom Miller, um, over in Marshfield, who's, he's their assistant superintendent for finance and operations. Um, he has shared the contact information with everybody that was on the planning, uh, regional planning committee there as well with me to ask questions. Um, Marshfield approached it, the debt piece of it, a little bit different than the way we're thinking about approaching it. Um, I'm not going to say what way is better or worse, um, but, again, just the, the, the pieces about the regional agreement, I can absolutely, if you're interested in talking to a school committee member, give you contact information.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that we're learn, learning the lessons of somebody who just went through it, but it sounds like we are, so, cool.
How, how confident are you in the twenty million dollar number that we're putting forward for the debt exclusion piece of it?
That number is based on, it really, you said it earlier, it comes down to enrollment. So I can look at my nine communities, and I can say with pretty good confidence that we're entering a window of time where seven of those nine communities regularly oversubscribe, or five are oversubscribed. Situit and Hanover have just recently, in the last few years, started to fill their seats. So the reason I start with an enrollment answer is because if I thought there was a lot of volatility.
Yep.
If you feel as though a community like Pembroke, if offered forty seats, would fill forty, that would change, that would change my answer. I don't think we're going to, even with a school that we're building for nine hundred students, we're currently six hundred and eighty-five. So this building is going to scale to a nine hundred student design. And my messaging is, we can only expand as fast as the towns can pay an operating budget, so we got to cool our jets on that part. Uh, but I think, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable number, given the fact that if there was any variance, it would probably come from communities such as Norwell and Cohasset, who historically don't use all of their seats. So if I, if we have a, if we have a ten-member district where eight of the towns are taking their allotted seats, leaving only a handful to reapportion, I, I, I have to believe that we're, I have to believe that we would be pretty close in that, in that scenario.
Then the one thing that did come up recently, and, and I think we have to, we have to say something about it, and I'm going to ask you about it. How confident are you with your current bond rating that the interest rates on the debt are going to be at least somewhat in the ballpark of, of what you're looking at?
We, uh, we don't have a bond rating, because we haven't borrowed money in a long time. So that's something that we're taking the first steps toward.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it, but the, the interest rate that you're using in your estimates.
From our Unibank Financial Advisors, that's what we've been holding.
No, that, that's helpful, and then.
I get to say what he said.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's fair enough. And then, this may seem like an inane question, so forgive me, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The tuition we pay is actually covering the operating budget, or is it tuition plus an operating budget assessment?
So it's, we would, we'll refer to it as an assessment. Uh, as, tuition would be what we would say for, say, a non-resident community, so. But the assessment, when we bring it to each of our town meetings, it's one number, and it includes any operating, capital, and debt mixed in.
And that was the sixteen thousand dollar average that I saw in the.
Yes, yes. Now, though, that range, so, so for instance, we don't have any debt on the books. We have no debt. But if we did, that number would get factored in. So when we're looking at per, when we're comparing per pupil costs, vocational schools, K to twelve districts, one, one of the, one of the many, you know, it's an apple and a banana, is when we talk about per pupil, it includes capital. So sometimes when people are really looking like, how much more expensive is it per pupil to educate a kid at the Voc Tech? We have to make sure that we are extracting the capital to try to, to try to bring it.
Apples, apples, I, I agree.
But for simplicity, those numbers would be, those numbers would be all in, you know, all-inclusive. Uh, I do think it's, and, and I think Erin's done a great job of, of unpacking the, the numbers, because, um, you know, we don't control that state formula. We know that the formula is out of date, and we know that. We know that the formula is out of date and we know that we can't keep up.
The chapter seventy.
The chapter seventy formula is woefully out of date. We cannot keep up with the pace of operating costs, hold harmless status. Is, thank you for not cutting, but my goodness gracious, every penny we want to increase is on, is on the backs of the locals. The story is similar for us. Our different story is that we have growing enrollment. I have an, I have an increase of nineteen students and my chapter seventy-eight is projected to go up fifty-one thousand dollars. That, that's less than the seventy-five dollars per kid that they've got baked into the governor's budget now. So my confidence level, I, I think these numbers are reliable, I think they trend reliably. Our capital budget in the future, as Erin pointed out with the new building, it's going to be transportation. We own our own buses, we employ our own bus drivers, and we have lease purchases on propane buses. And so I've said to my school board that in the, in, for the next several years, when you see a capital request from me, it's going to be in the realm of replace that shop, replace the carpentry trailer, the carpentry van and our fleet of buses.
And in the, but the new building, for the most part, will have obviously all new spaces, all new shop, all new, all that will be all new.
Yes.
So that defers, to your point, I think, some of the capital pieces. The other thing, you raised a really interesting point, Katrina, that we have to consider and when we're doing the education back to the community, we have to think about it. This doesn't fall on just one side of the ledger from an expense perspective, right? If you do have eighty-two less kids, or seventy-five less kids, or seventy less kids in a high school, there are going to be enrollment-driven savings there that will reduce what the overall sort of requirement and impact is, which will mitigate some of what we have to pay out in, in some of these areas, albeit maybe only a small piece. But there is some offset there. I mean, there absolutely is going to be some savings that are going to mitigate against the, the expense side of the ledger. But I want to be, I also want to be careful because I think the other piece of the education has to go back to kids. Not every kid is meant to go to college. And we are in desperate need of plumbers, electricians, mechanics, people in the trades. It's, we are in desperate need and unfortunately, with the way vocational education is currently handled and funded within the Commonwealth, there are fewer not more. State Representative Suesi, we could really use your help in, in, in getting there. And if you could get us about twenty-three million dollars, that would be super helpful, by the way.
He's got his checkbook.
But, but in reality here, this is about, we have promised to give a free, fair, public education to all kids, including those kids that are not ready to go to college. This is actually helping our communities. This is turning out, and I'm thrilled you're out in plumbing, by the way, plumbers and electricians and, and folks in, in the trades. And it is vitally important to our communities to have those folks stay in their communities, build businesses in their communities, employ people in their communities. Voc Tech schools do that, right? Now, the question is, four hundred and fifty dollars is a lot. And unfortunately, the timing's not great because we're going to have some of those buildings that are said to be supported all hitting when we're asking for this. But that education is going to be fundamentally important and pushing us forward.
Yeah, and I think the other piece is that there, you know, there's estimates of there being huge gaps in those workforces. So if we're looking at preparing our students for, you know, a world of tomorrow, we need to be looking at what jobs are going to be available. And I know that those industries in this area, because there isn't as much Voc Tech education, is, there's going to be a need.
So one of the things I'd like to do, because I think it's important that you have something to bring back to your school committee from us. I, I'd like to put a motion on the table that we moved to authorize the superintendent to engage in discussions to develop a Pembroke Regional Agreement with South Shore Voc Tech. It's a good show, Erin could candidly do this anyway, she could. But it's a way for us to show support for this, something you can tangibly bring back to show that this committee is or is not, I'm not going to say how folks are going to vote, in support of this. But I think it gives you something tangible to go back to and say Pembroke is serious.
I think you're right, and I think it does help to turn the page because it will then help my school committee to focus on the questions that will be in front of them, including bringing on another community, the reapportionment of seats. I've got committee members who have pointed out to me that they've got a lot of students from their towns on waiting lists. But it's a real expensive building to build, so this is all going to come down to seat access, cost sharing. That's ultimately where this conversation comes down to. But a motion from, an action from this committee would allow me to communicate it as you've described.
And to be very clear, because you said this, but I don't want it to get lost, we're not going to have eighty-two seats at the beginning, right? And you are, you can only expand the offering to the extent that you can hire people, which is a challenge in and of itself, and that your operating budget can expand in order to do, to do that.
That, that's right. And, and the charts that you have were essentially me taking a freeze frame of the K to eight enrollments. So each column that you see represented with a number down the bottom in yellow, that's, that's if every single kid in every single grade stayed exactly where they were for the next eight years. But the trends are, the trends are pretty stable within our community. So that's why it goes back to, the numbers look, if the enrollment looks stable, then you can make those, you can make those projections as well.
So I'm going to ask the committee to put the motion forward, and then I'm going to ask the audience if they have questions. With an open motion on the table, it's far easier for me to take questions from you. So can I get a motion to authorize the superintendent to engage in discussions to develop a Pembroke Regional Agreement with South Shore Voc Tech?
So, second.
So motion by Sue, seconded by Katrina. Before, because there is further discussion, I give the audience a chance to either ask questions. What's that? To, to ask questions or give us your thoughts or your comments before we vote on the motion. I would ask if you're going to speak, to come to the microphone, state your name and roughly where, you don't have to give me your exact address where you live in Pembroke. Does anybody want to speak? Good, Melissa.
Hi, Melissa Hooly. I did have one question. I know I asked you this, Erin, so I just wanted to have clarification. It was about the other member towns voting us in and then the operational piece, it looked like it's all at the same time. So do they all, would they all need to accept us before we went for?
So it's all contingent, right? So if we got a successful debt exclusion and operational override and only four towns said they wanted us to join, then it's not binding.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to make sure that we are able to do both of those things in the spring of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, as Tom said, their town meetings, I did look them up, span like April to almost June.
All the way to June, and we're usually in May.
And ours is always going to be the second Tuesday.
So I didn't want to miss that opportunity in May for us to do our operational stuff. All right, thank you.
Hi, Richland, a quick comment. This was a real demonstration of an honest assessment of what we're really looking at taxpayer-wise. This is going to go very well, I believe, when you guys are talking about moving this forward for an educational show down, down, down the line. I'm impressed. I mean, you, you got some great numbers, you, you took a deep dive. I'm sure the public's going to have questions going forward, and it seems like things are going to start evolving. Mr. Hickey, all nine towns voted last fall, was it, to, to, to buy in to the.
In January.
For the new building. The new building, which was really impressive and these numbers were really well.
Yeah, we had a, we had a seventy-eight percent affirmative vote and it, it also, which, it was an aggregate vote, but it was nice to see it also pass in all nine communities, many of which had competing capital demands, MSBA projects just ahead of us, other non-educational capital projects. It was a, a great, a great vote of confidence.
Yeah. No, I'm really encouraged about what happened here tonight, so that's all I want to say.
Is there any MSBA reimbursement?
Yes.
Oh, thankfully, yes.
They took very good care of their building.
No, 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 it's important, that is, could you just tell us what that is?
Yep, so the, the fake answer and the real answer. The fake answer is.
We don't like fake answers.
The fake answer is sixty-one percent reimbursement of eligible costs. The real answer is about forty percent.
Yeah, okay.
But with, with Representative Suesi, talk about just jumping in and, and, and taking this as a leader in our region. Voc schools get reimbursed at the same rate as any other school.
That's great.
The state does not take into consideration the specialized square footage. It is something that if we could remedy that, either through the MSBA bylaws or through outside economic development legislation, it benefits everyone at the local level when the state says regionalization is good and workforce development is important and partnerships are necessary, but all these little towns have got to find the means to pay for it. So we're going to continue to advocate for this, you know, going, going forward.
That's great, thank you. Paige?
Hi, Paige Graziano. I have a couple of questions. One question is, in response to the reduction in the student enrollment here at Pembroke High School, any necessary funding cuts to accommodate that reduction? Could those be specifically passed along to cover the cost of the vocational portion of this?
So we generally would not do that, right? We would not earmark something because I can't tell you in three years what our economic outlook is going to be, right?
Sure.
And, and nobody behind this table, I think, could say, well, we're definitely going to take a cut that, you know, we think is going to come. And who knows what will happen, right? I, I think that's part of, as you've seen, because you've been present for about two years now at almost every meeting, you've seen how we budget, right? So there's a prioritization, there's a level one, a level two, a level three type of thing. So, you know, if we have reductions, obviously this is then a cost to the district. If we pass that, this would be one way of potentially meeting that funding. But no committee would tie their hands that, that strictly on what a reduction may or may not be. It, it wouldn't be prudent.
Is there any way to tie back any benefits from student, student participation from the Voc Tech, doing projects for the town as a, as a line item budget reduction? Or be able to specifically isolate, for example, if they were to paint three police cars, that the cost of that was eighty thousand dollars and that line item gets specifically designated? Or that that would be able to be tracked for the community to see that value?
So I think that's a great call out, right? So part of the marketing, because really that's what you're talking about, right? Part of the marketing in, in the explaining the why is going to go to things like there is the potential for students to do X, Y, and Z, no different than when we have a, an Eagle Scout come before us and improve our cross-country trails or build a sign that maybe we couldn't even afford to do. So it might not even be something that, that supplants a budget item. It may be supplemental to something that we'd love to do but can't afford. It's some of the benefit, I think, of being in there and you would, we absolutely should add that to the presentation of the why.
Yeah, most definitely. I think that will help the community get behind a little bit more what's going on here. And then my last question is really for Mr. Hickey here. What is your perception of the benefit for the other member towns to vote us in? And do you think that there's a positive upswing to do that? They seem to vote in Marshfield pretty readily. Is there any difference in how they would perceive Pembroke from, you know, as a joining community? Thank you.
Well, gee, that's a great question. I, I, I equate it to, you know, you gotta, you gotta pay the rent so you bring in another roommate, but you gotta make room on the couch and in the fridge, so. And, and the more serious answer is, we're an oversubscribed school district, four hundred applications for a hundred and eighty seats. A lot of the communities, what my school committee members will need to look at is, okay, we have a very big building project from blue collar towns, they're going to have to pay this bill over a long period of time. We love Voc Ed, we want kids to get access to Voc Ed, now we have to talk about the access part. So I think for my school, I think some of my school board members will have to just, they'll want to look at the numbers in the same way. Okay, with nine towns and a bigger operating budget that we'll have to pay, with ten towns and a bigger operating budget, what's the trade, what, what would be the trade-off? If, if, if you get a portioned a few extra seats per year, but yet you have a partner to help fund? Because obviously the debt, the debt exclusion, the, the building project, debt exclusions are going to have to pass in all of my communities eventually to start covering these costs, but it's the operating cost. I will, I mean, if, if, if I'm, if I'm a school of six hundred and eighty-five right now, I can scale up to nine hundred students and tell you how many custodians, bus drivers, teachers, paras, administrators we're going to need to hire. And that's a significant increase to our operating budget. So the greatest benefit is more kids get access to Voc Ed, that's just something we feel in our heart, not necessarily in our pocketbook. But the other part is, this is an expensive project. Now, now balance that against how you reapportion seats. By the way, the reapportionment of seats is not a state law, it's not a state regulation, it's a school committee admissions policy. Something we've just been, we've just done that for, forever. And we think that it's reasonably fair to say that the apportionment of your seats is based on the size of the eighth grade class. But, you know, that, if, if that model changed with a future school committee, that, that possibly could. But I've not heard anybody suggest that it should be left up to, you know, let, like, people want skin in the game. Like, we're paying for this school, what, what access do we have? So I think there's a definite benefit and it's on the cost side. The question is balancing out the, the access to seats.
Karen?
Hi, I have more of a statement than a question. As a parent of a second grader who, his first crawling steps were towards a measuring tape and a hammer. And he's currently building robots in his spare time, I just want to say that I can't advocate enough for this. And as a community member, I'm happy to help support in any way possible, show up and be a part of this whole community when it comes to the Voc Tech. I've had nephews that went there, so it's really a great step. We can never offer too much education. Every child learns differently and having these options can only benefit our community going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? Okay, great. So we do have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion from the committee? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, you have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would, would you mind if I just, if I make one quick comment? So I want to thank you for your efforts. I want to thank you for, and members of the audience as well. School finance and wherever kids go, the money follows, can create frictions between public school entities. And it's gratifying to see that the sentiment from the K to twelve school committee is that they care about all Pembroke kids. And not once in this, this evening have I heard language such as losing kids to the Voc Tech, which is very weighted language sometimes when I, I sometimes hear that. And it doesn't mean that people are struggling with the school funding situation. It is definitely understandable. We hope that it's, you know, we hope that there'll be some longer-range improvements there. But I appreciate the sentiments and, and the feeling and the philosophy behind it. My one last public service announcement to, if I may, using this platform, is that the, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is currently considering making seismic changes to vocational admissions policy. And if they are approved, it will, it will change the way in which students are admitted to vocational schools, making it a lottery. And I think that's going to cause some serious concerns for families because the messaging at our middle schools for decades has been, it's something you need to work for. And I'm of the belief that you can have a fair admission system with standards. I'm concerned about where this is going to go. It would be, I do not think that is a game changer for the decision of where this conversation goes. But for those that are excited about the potential for vocational education, for those who support Voc Techs, I'd ask you to just take a second look at what's being proposed and if you're so inclined to offer a public comment, which runs through April eighteenth.
And so where can people do the public comment?
The, on the, the board, Department of Education website, and there's a Board of Education link. There are, they've got several series of regulations right now out for public comment, competency determination, restraints, I think. And, and we're on this long page, but there is, there is a section. And it talks about what, I won't, I won't take up any more time, but it will spell out what the proposed changes are. And, yeah, so that our community has some concerns.
I, I actually posted about those, that, that public comment for those on my school committee Facebook page. So you can find it there as well. But one point I wanted to make is you can also attend those meetings and submit your public comment virtually. So you can attend the Board of Education meetings and sometimes having a public comment where you're on camera talking with folks can be more impactful. So if you feel, feel so inclined to do that as well, that could also be helpful. But definitely the online public comment is, is helpful as well.
Thank you for that.
No worries. I also think, by the way, Representative Suesi's here, he's listening to us. But I would encourage all of you to reach out to Senator Fernandez, Representative LaNatra, Representative Suesi, and let them know your feelings on this too, because, you know, well. Because, you know, well, that will take one direction, the legislature has a lot of authority. So thank you for mentioning that. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You do not have to stay.
Ryan, did you have any questions? Ryan, did you have any questions? I wanted to make sure.
Go Voc Tech.
One more.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the whole Voc Tech Committee, including Melissa, who really like spearheaded that whole thing and got the town on board.
Who's excited about maintenance? Woo! Yay!
Speaking of buildings.
So as the business manager and facilities director, I will be presenting the maintenance department overview. Again, it'll be riveting. I wanted to start just by highlighting a couple of the great things that have happened this past year. I know that a lot of times it feels like we are just treading water when it comes to operating five school buildings that are roughly fifty years old each, each with a pretty major renovation or remodel that is now nearing twenty-five to twenty-seven years. But we do try to chip away at some of our capital projects. We've been making HVAC repairs across the district this past year, and that will continue into next year. We have started a project at Habimach to remove some of the carpeting and replacing it with tile. We've done some plumbing upgrades. I think when you're thinking about our five buildings and the fact that they were all renovated and/or remodeled between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and one, that means every toilet in Pembroke is twenty-four years old at this point, every faucet, every water fountain, everything is on the same replacement schedule, which makes it pretty challenging.
Excellent.
So we do work at that. Each year, a lot of our facilities improvements happen over the summer when our buildings are unoccupied. We have been lucky enough to have a pretty comprehensive painting project happening at Pembroke High School. This is the second summer that that has happened, and, you know, it is amazing, it seems pretty trivial to say, but what a fresh coat of paint does to a classroom. And I think, you know, as long as we can continue to upkeep our buildings, it is pretty impressive that they are, in most cases, the bones of them are more than fifty years old, and they're still looking great. So we are working on some smaller projects. There hasn't been any great, large-scale things happening this year, but we are focused on some for the upcoming years. So this is a breakout of our facilities budget. We currently have eighteen full-time custodians. There's three at each elementary school and the middle school that make up as one day shift custodian to night shift custodians. And then we have a combination of one day shift custodian, three full-time night custodians at the high school, and then a custodian maintenance that does our wastewater treatment plant. So we, not sure why it works this way, but we are responsible for our own wastewater treatment plant at Pembroke Public Schools. We have a large plant at Pembroke High School, and there's a smaller plant here in the parking lot at North and the parking lot at Bryantville. Doesn't exist anywhere else in the town, because in years past, we've talked about, is there a way to kind of transition that service over to the town? That job doesn't exist there, so we are really forging a new path here. We spend just about half a million dollars each year on contracted services associated with maintenance. I'm going to give you a breakout of what that looks like. Each year, we participate in a collaborative buy with local communities and municipalities that allows us to purchase bulk toilet paper, paper towels and such at a much lower price. We do, whenever possible, try to employ substitute coverage for our custodians when they're out. It is, we are pretty bare on maintenance staff, so if somebody is out, that is definitely noticeable to students and staff in the building as far as the cleanliness standpoint, so we do our best to fill those roles when we can. And we spend just over a million dollars on utilities, so heat, electricity, water. A breakout of our contracted services for this year, you can see a bulk of our money goes to repairs, so just under fifty percent of the budget there is repairs. That's HVAC, that's plumbing, that's electrical, that's those pieces. Unencumbered, we have about forty-five thousand dollars left in this year's operating budget for maintenance. That is not a lot of money considering we have still three full months of operation. So we are really thoughtful about the items that we're purchasing right now and the projects that we are undertaking. If it's something that can wait until July, till the next funding cycle, we do try to do that. Again, we spend about forty-six thousand dollars to run our wastewater treatment plant. That includes the chemicals associated with balancing over there, as well as a contract with an engineering firm that does our testing and then reporting to the state.
WWTP.
Wastewater. How many other school districts do that?
So Silver, I think it's something you guys got from Silver Lake, because Silver Lake is the only other one that does. The gift that keeps on giving. It's weird, it's really weird.
What's normal? I don't even know.
They either have city-town plumbing, or they have a really big.
Septic? I don't even know what any, I know.
Yeah, not a septic.
So we do, it's, what we have is like a big septic, right? It's just, but we are responsible for managing the levels there, so when the buildings are unoccupied over the summer, obviously, less waste is going through the system, so we have to balance bacteria and whatnot. When we're cleaning, we have to counteract any mop bucket water that's going down the drain. We are ultimately responsible to the environmental, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for any ground runoff water that we have. It's just, it's like a whole nother level to facilities management that just seems strange to be.
How do we change it?
We've tried, and so the only, you know, so.
Really expensive.
Can we partner with the old era restaurant?
So we are lucky, so it is quite a hefty license certification requirement to run a wastewater treatment plant. I think, and it's only a guess on my part, when we split from Silver Lake, there was a custodian on staff that had the level three wastewater treatment license, so it worked. That custodian retired about a decade ago, and we have been struggling to fill it since then. We do have, one of our maintenance staff has a backup operator license, so we are able to access that license in conjunction with the lovely gentleman that retired from Silver Lake ten years ago, he still is managing our wastewater treatment. We are at the point now where that gentleman would actually like to truly retire and not come here every day. So we are obviously going to need to look at potentially outsourcing it to a firm, which is more expensive than having the employee on site, but we don't have the capacity to get the licensure. It is a pretty extensive math component to the licensure.
We've tried, actually, to, over the years, we've tried internally to help folks get the licensure.
We're trying, we're trying.
It's a tough test to pass, right? I mean, it is. But, yeah, it's expensive and difficult to transition over.
But we can't, but it is just not a possibility to put in like a normal, commercial-grade septic system. It's just not, like, get rid of the wastewater thing and do.
So we have septic, so the practice field, that beautiful practice field we just talked about is the leaching field for Pembroke High School. We have septic, our system is septic, but we are responsible for managing the balance of that.
But why? Like, does every business do that when they have?
No.
So how, is, like, how do we? Yes and no, right? So you have a service contract.
Like, does shop and shop have like a big, you know, wastewater treatment under each of their buildings that they have to manage? Like, I don't understand how our complex is different.
I think a function of it is that your high school used to be Silver Lake Regional Middle School, right? And so that is the setup.
And they had a setup there already, right? When we transitioned into control of the building.
What conversation could be had to figure out if there's even a possibility of not having this be the solution? And then, and maybe talking about the town?
I would say it's a long-range planning discussion.
Doing it? Right, no, so I've already had the conversation about the town doing it. They don't employ anybody with the licensure to do that because they don't do that work in the water department at all.
But to eliminate the wastewater treatment plant and go in a different direction would absolutely be a long-range planning.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. And you would have to economically plan for something like that, which my guess is, well, I don't want to tell you what it is or not.
Yeah. We should at least, like, look at it.
Yeah.
Because you could probably reuse the leaching field and, like, just do, I don't know, something else, whatever commercial businesses do.
So just to not go too, too deep down this rabbit hole.
I feel like we're in the weeds. No, I'm sorry.
Let's, I want to bring us back to the overall facilities budget so we can move through it, and we'll just add it to a long-range planning discussion. All right.
Did I miss one?
Yeah, keep going.
I feel like I missed one. All right, look at us. So we do have some goals for the upcoming school year. We are obviously looking to replace some, to replace some of the HVACs at our elementary schools. We are looking to continue the flooring upgrades at Habimach. We did receive capital funding two years ago to replace the gym roof at Bryantville. We had a bit of a roadblock when it came to finding the mechanical drawings for that section of the building, but we are well on our way to getting that replaced. The hope is that we will have that accomplished by the end of the summer, but if not, it'll go into the fall. As you all know, we are getting a new playground at Habimach, hopefully, with support of that CPC warrant article. We also have on the warrant, the request to replace two PA systems, one at Habimach and one here at North. This is deja vu, because we had the same goal last year of the parking lots, and we didn't make any progress, so I just changed the date to fiscal year twenty-six. So our parking lots are in pretty poor condition across the district in all five buildings, so there is a fair amount of settling and sinking that's happening. You'll see there's, when you come in just here to come to the meeting, there's a large drain, sewer drain there with a pretty deep divot. There's, you know, we do some patching each year in each of the schools, but I think it's time that we really have somebody come out and do a study to.
This is us, not the town.
This is us, not the town. So we're responsible for anything once it crosses over, like, let's say, the threshold that pilgrim rode onto our property. So if we're filling potholes and doing anything like that, it's on us, it's not on the town. So I think it's time that we have an engineering firm come out and really put together what it would look like to get our parking lots up to grade.
So if we, if we do, if we decide to do that, would we at the same time look at potentially adding a little piece of sidewalk at that exit of the senior lot so that you could change the crosswalk?
So that is learning lane, that is not in our parking lot, so that's technically a DPW thing, and in the past, that's, those are granite curbs there, it's not asphalt parking lot, but we could work it together, I think.
Yeah. I feel like that's time to.
I've got a question. I think I've noticed, there's like, I don't know if it's the makings of one of those smiley face signs, but right about halfway through learning lane, there's like a pole with a solar panel on it.
We're getting there. There has been some interest from the community to have a flashing sign on.
Everyone wants to get their smiley face up.
On learning lane, but there is no electricity that runs that way, so the only option is solar.
Remember, we talked about it? I just like saw it up on.
We're getting there.
Oh, my God, are we getting smiles?
I don't know, I think it's the frown face.
Everyone wants a smile.
They hit the frown.
So why do I have to go twenty miles an hour to get it?
Which is really slow.
All right, keep going.
We have some requests.
Do you have someone to beat?
No, she has a funny.
We have some requests in the facilities department. Obviously, it has been eleven years now since we've had a Director of Finance and Operations that manages facilities. I do think.
Because Erin does two jobs.
I do think that with the age of the buildings and the scale of the projects that you're looking at kind of coming on in the next two to three years, we should really be considering what that looks like. I'm not necessarily tied to this model. We've talked in the past about is there a way to share a facilities position with the town? Bill and I have talked about that a little bit in the past couple of years. There's obviously not.
We tried that before, though, and it was.
It was hard before, but it worked for when you were building your project. So when you were building and renovating, that's when you had a shared facilities position here. When that project was complete, that position shifted to supervision of maintenance staff. That's not necessarily a strong suit of somebody that has a deep knowledge of facilities. So really, being thoughtful about what the role entails. Obviously, neither budget necessarily has the capacity to fund even half of this position moving forward, but I think it's something that is important that you continue to talk about. Because I do think, from a just physical plant perspective, I'm sure you get a lot of feedback about the way something looks, or we could be doing something better, and it seems like a cop-out, but the true answer is, there's actually nobody working on that. There is not anybody whose full-time job is managing the facilities here. It's really an add-on either to myself or to Brian or even to the building principals, so really working through that. We get a fair amount of feedback about what the outside of our buildings look like as far as exterior maintenance, so potentially adding additional custodian. You did have an outdoor maintenance custodian back in 2013 that was reduced. We used to have nineteen custodians, we went down one. We do see a fair amount of absences, as with any position, and the custodial staff at a hard time filling those absences, so having somebody that's available to float between the buildings would be great, too. And as with everything in the entire world, just doing things are more expensive, so an increase to that contracted services line would allow us to get ahead of some of the repairs on our HVAC and plumbing as opposed to just fixing emergencies.
I do want to point out, because I think it's important, right, especially where we started this, talking about being prudent with financials and being prudent with the dollars that we receive. Our administrative overhead is one of the lowest that you're going to find in most of the districts that surround us. And this is a great example of that, right? You have the superintendent also is a part-time facilities director, also is a business manager, I was going to comment on it, but you also have the athletic director playing a piece of the role here. To point out, your building principal is kind of diving in. Everyone's doing the shell game coverage, right? There's going to be a point that we are going to need to be, to have a business manager, and that we are going to need something like a facilities manager, and we're going to have to bite the bullet on some of these things, right? So there's always going to be competing priorities, but without that bench, we've got a lot of single points of failure throughout the administrative piece of the organization. And for us as an executive management team, that's not a good thing to have. So it's just something, I think, to put on the list and to keep our mind on and keep the eye on, starting to add some of these roles back.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree, especially with facilities. I know part of the way, Erin, you've been able to keep costs down is by keeping an eye on what projects need to come up and making sure that you replace it before it gets to the point of needing to replace the entirety of something, right? So you're doing the checks along the way and the maintenance along the way. But again, that's not something that, you have a lot of other competing priorities, right? And I think having somebody dedicated to that would make, probably save us money, you know, in the end, getting some of the projects done quickly and making sure we have the time to plan accordingly.
Right, and sharing that position with the town is what it looks like in a lot of communities of similar size. They tend to share functions like facilities, IT, human resources. We don't have any of that, so.
Yeah.
I know when Bill gets his.
Natalie does a really good job of human resources. Thank you very much.
Right, but we only own some of it, right? We only own some of it, right? Benefits are not administered, administered to us and whatnot. So, you know, and even the folks at Town Hall that have a human resource function, that's not that they have multiple other functions, too.
Hundred percent. Any last questions on facilities? Awesome, good job.
So, subcommittees, do you want to give an update on budget?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So we met yesterday, we had some initial discussions surrounding fees, and we took a look at where we were with fees potentially. You know, we're going to bring that forward, I think it's in our next meeting.
Yeah, next week, yes, sir.
Where it is just a fun, fun meeting, where we talk about sort of fees and what we're doing and where we're going. Budgets, I will bring forth some fee adjustments, generating a reasonable amount of funding and what have you. We've lagged behind other communities when it comes to this because we have traditionally tried to keep that as low as possible for families, understanding at the beginning of every sort of new year, it is a pretty sizable check that a lot of families are running. So that will be done in our next meeting. That's up.
In your packet, technically, even though I sent you a link when I sent you your packet. You can't click them on this paper? So it's consideration for first read for the new PCMS course proposals. I have asked Donna to join us for next week's meeting so that she can answer any questions. This is just really like your first look at them. What I do want to point out is that we have made some shifts in the middle school schedule. There are some new courses, but some of the courses in choice that are there for students next year that includes Chorus and a couple of other things already exist in our program of studies, so they're not new courses. So commuter, computer programming, some of the art pieces, they're not new, they already exist in our program of studies, but students will be able to select a variety of both term-based and semester-based electives. So that's a, a shift for us. What, what the model has looked like in the past has been, here are the four electives, and you're going to take each of them one a term. And now you get some choice if you are more interested in art, or drama, or are some of those things, there's some paths for you. There are some consistent electives that all students will get. Model UN moved from eighth grade to seventh grade. I think that syncs up nicely with the curriculum there. We heard the feedback about giving some exposure at the middle school level to what a biomed pathway looks like, so it's not just a buzzword, and kids understand what that means. So there's a medical detectives elective offering, as well as really building out some of the performing arts, whether it's chorus, drama, those are all options for students.
So can I get a motion to accept the PCMS new course proposal as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Allison. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
The last thing is just for first read, the 25-26 PCMS program of studies. So I sent that to you as a link. It was the full edited version, so you can see on the right-hand side all of the recommended edits that Donna was, was making there. So if you have any others that you'd like us to add or something you saw that was not, you weren't thinking of, just reach out.
I'm just going to throw the motion out, then I'll ask for comments. Can I get a motion to accept the 25-26 PCMS program of studies as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Allison, seconded by Sue. Did you have any questions?
I do just want to say, we had a lot of conversation a few months back about parents signing off on schedules and what that looks like. Donna will talk a little bit about that and how they're, they're managing that parent education piece of it, before you approve it for our purposes.
Awesome. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous, Natalie.
So your next meeting is next Tuesday, 4/1. We are going to do fees, which I lovingly call Groundhog Day, where I show you the same eight slides I've showed you for 15 years, and you raise the keys $25. And I'm also going to give you your first look at admin recommended budget. So we have completed each of the department in bud, in building-based budgets. I'm going to put together the list of priorities, talk to you about, as an admin team, what we feel is a level one. I will give you the comprehensive listing of everything that was asked for, in case you feel like something else should be a level one that we don't have. And I also put together a way to fund some of it. Obviously, there's no possible way to fund the millions of dollars that were asked for over the course of the past 11 weeks, but we will do our best to identify things that we could do differently or better to save funds, and, and really try to fund some of those priorities. I am optimistic that this is the first time in a, in a while that we're probably going to be talking about being able to fund a thing or two, which is great. I think there were some great, great ideas brought forward in the past few weeks, and I'd like to see some of them kind of come to fruition.
We're also going to request from our representatives, some of that, they call it pothole funding.
So I'll present those next week, too.
On a couple of these, too. Yep.
Then your next meeting after that is scheduled for April 15th. That's your joint meeting with the Select Board and Advisory. They've asked for a 7:00 PM start that night.
So the budget next week would be a balanced budget?
I'm going to show you my suggestion to balance it, and you can let me know if you agree or disagree with that.
Okay, got it.
I do think it's important, coming into that meeting, just make sure that you've gone through all the priorities, you, you, you know, because you may see things, like, why isn't this there? Why, why is this here? That's the time to ask those questions, right? To really kind of get into it, because we should walk out next week with our number, and knowing what's, makes up that number.
So we don't think we're going to be meeting on 8?
So we may, and the reason that we may is, we may need an executive session for an extended period of time to hear some, some current Level 3 grievances that had to be postponed, as well as a new Level 3 grievance that came asking, but we're trying to find out if our legal representatives can be there at that point in time. It would be primarily the executive session, and it would likely be a few hours.
Okay.
So we will hopefully know more by, by the time we meet next week. We also have some policy stuff that is pre-coming.
Yeah, policy subbed a couple of weeks ago. We didn't move anything forward at the next meeting, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, I, I would like to, if, if you guys can come to a recommendation on some of that stuff, I think it's great. But at minimum, I'd like to at least, I specifically asked for one of those things, so before this session of the committee adjourns, I'd at least like to be able to hear, here's the recommendation, or we don't have a recommendation, we want the committee to, to at least have a discussion about it, just because I actually.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we came to consensus on it.
Awesome.
Yep.
Any other future meeting topics or agenda items?
So you have your public budget hearing and school choice will be either the 29th of April or the 6th of May.
The 6th of May is my last meeting forever. I promise this time. After 21 years of doing some form of this work, I mean, it's more than enough time, and I'll be happy to have a, a statement about that at that point. So hearing nothing else, I want a kind of motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Katrina, seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained?